According to my watch, it's six o'clock. And we start. All right. I gave you items for discussion as I typically do for the meetings. I would like to make a change at Bill's request. If we could do items that Bill needs to be involved with first. He's got a son with a birthday.
Yeah, David's got killed there.
Yeah, so let's.
We're coming home.
If you would, let me not do the presentation right now, but move on to the second item concerning the Jonah Lane recently tabled at January meeting. Any discussion?
This is the property with the post departments?
Well, in light of the information that we got at the last meeting, what is our recourse? We could.
I think the city attorney has got some ideas on that that he would want to discuss, but that would have to be done at a close meeting. Executive session.
Can I say we're going to executive session Monday and?
Monday and discuss it?
Unless, yeah.
All right, fair enough. Second item that Bill would need some guidance on from Bill is purchase of the entire property also tabled at the January meeting.
It's been tabled and we had a meeting of the downtown development authority. They voiced their opinion. And what I think needs to be done, and you can consider it, I mean, you can consider what I say and then make your own decision whenever y'all decide to vote for it. Vote on it, excuse me, vote on it. But we have the money, it's been budgeted. Go buy it, be done with it.
The alliance that you met with, what was their opinion?
They're not going to do it. My guess will not sign any document.
You're talking about the downtown development?
Right.
Okay, okay. I was talking about the downtown one, sorry.
No.
Okay.
I don't know anything about that.
So we'll put her on the agenda? Next item is discussion, there is a page in the packet. Application from the Woodbridge Inn to start the application process.
The advertising, Sonny can tell you too, advertising once a week, four weeks.
In the package, you've got a copy of the first page of their application. They are very interested in obtaining the license as quickly as possible. With Valentine's Day coming up, we can't vote on continuing this or allowing them to continue with the application process until we're in a meeting. And what I'm understanding, it takes four weeks of advertisement. That's not going to allow Valentine's Day beer and wine sales for them. Sonny?
They started their advertisement when they sent their application in. That's when they can start advertising. And they have done that. In fact, they should be coming up with weed probably this week or next week.
Okay, with that, Bill, can we Monday night accept the application and continuing? And then count the number of days and have a call meeting?
As long as it's been published, whilst a week, four weeks.
Four weeks. All right, we will have that information Monday night. And with your permission on request, a call meeting hopefully before the 24th so that they can get the city license and then start working on the state license.
Apparently, they can have the state license within 48 hours after they get the city license.
Yes.
That's true, I've done it before. I've been to Atlanta, God bless Cleveland.
So we'll put that on the agenda and we will have a, how about potential day for a call meeting? All right. Next item that we want council's opinion on is the flight ordinance.
I did a little research and went back to what he had. Other than basically on page, one, two, third page in, it had an municipal court. We wanted all that to add a more appropriate court just to hire. That was, I thought I'd change that. No, it's right here. It was nothing to be changed, but it's okay, it's just a problem. But other than that, it was, we didn't see anything. Other than that, we sat for a minute. But we did have a question on complaints. Kind of businesses make a claim or it has to be a citizen?
Needs to be a citizen.
Okay.
Not just a taxpayer.
Okay. All right, that was a question, just how would it?
Let me read them again.
I'm saying like you own a business uptown.
I understand. I can't remember the language in that, but I think it.
Pretty much said five citizens.
Five citizens.
Currently calls for five residents of the city.
So I didn't know.
Residents means residing. That could be changed.
Okay, I think that's something we might want to do on future amendment. Go ahead and get this through and then go ahead and get that put in as, I guess, as an amendment.
As a later time. Okay.
So that one change, you want to share that with Bill?
Yeah.
We'll get a final.
I know exactly where it is because this is that way before and I thought I did change it.
So can we do final reading on that Monday night?
Sure.
In your package, you've got a letter from, copy of a letter from Bill Teck to me concerning letters he sent to property owners in the Hannah Bridge area. I took Bill out there along with Lonnie one day, two weeks ago, whatever. And Bill sent letters to all the property owners. I think there's four property owners.
Five.
Five property owners in there. Since that time, I went back, looked at the place Friday and Monday of this week, Friday of last week, Monday of this week. Big improvement. Lonnie, have you been out there since Monday?
I went out there, I said, I went out there Tuesday.
Okay.
And it was still looking good. It was down in the woods where it's been drug by animals and wind blew it, but the rest of it looked good.
Good. That's for information only, I don't see it as an agenda item, but I wanted to let you know that Bill helped us out on that and looking pretty good. Next in your, on the list is discussion of the chamber, city agreement for tourism, development services. This is requested by the audit group. It has been, Bill reviewed it. It has been reviewed by the chamber and they are satisfied with it. I'd like to have a vote for that, on that at Monday night's meeting. So after it's signed by the city, I'll give it to the chamber, get their signature and it'll be available for the auditors when they come back in March.
This is the second time, second year in a row that auditors have a question about?
And if there's any, I know you haven't had a chance to read that, but between now and Monday night's meeting, if you have any questions or at Monday night's meeting, we can discuss David, let's see, let me do one more and then I'll let David do one. There's also a resolution that you need to spend some time with. Joint resolution with the city, between the city and county and the Veterans Memorial, Pickens County Veterans Memorial Park Incorporated. This is a resolution, joint resolution written by the county attorney. County has already signed it, asking the city to sign it also. That would give the Veterans Memorial Incorporated property adjacent to their current memorial rights to put additional memorials on that property. I believe that was a verbal agreement that had been made a number of months ago, John, do you know?
Are they asking for a title, clear title?
No, no, just right to use it as a.
Yes, that was discussed.
And Phil has decided, hey, let's put that on paper. I think it's a good idea to put it on paper that way.
Basically, everything's on the west side of the road, parking lot.
And Phil has done the legal description. I have certainly not checked that in any way. I'll trust the attorney's on that one.
You go with already what that?
I actually have. I'm going to look at it tomorrow.
You need a copy or?
I'll come over in the morning.
All right. So I'll put that on the agenda. David, your turn, Leachate contract.
Do you need me?
I don't know, I don't think there's a thing on this Leachate contract that is questionable. It's the same contract we've had with equal point except in the payment schedule. We have increased rates on higher concentrates. They have been given some higher concentrates and city needs to be able to be reimbursed for that. Rest of it's the same. Go ahead, David.
The only thing that that's trying to tell me is that we went up on the amounts because their concentration went up. So as you can see, before it stopped at 2,000, 3,000 was 12 cents, the whole range. And being they're actually going up to that concentration, we're charging them per hundred to 2100 to 2200, 13, 24. Charging them more because their concentration has gone up more. Basically, it's the same contract that the mayor had made years ago for them except we stopped at 2,000. You've seen this, okay? That we stopped at 2,000 instead, now we're going up to 3,000 because their concentration is going up. We're going to charge them more because of that. And they've already signed the contract that shows you what they paid in the past versus now, it goes all the way up to 3,000. It's original. You see, continues to go?
Yeah.
And that's basically the only thing changed on the agreement.
David, let me see it.
So this continues to go or yours has stopped?
They were hesitant. The last time we made agreement with them to go up to those prices, why have they changed their mind? Because they're not willing to go to Elja?
Well, Elja won't hardly take it no more. They've had a big spill a couple of months ago and they're down there only taking four loads a day from them.
Okay.
And nobody really wants to take a whole bunch of that, that's only four loads a day, it's all we're taking. And that's what the contract states, four loads a day.
David, you want to go ahead and continue with pump for the burnt mountain lift station, status of the water line replaced at 108 feet and road? And then also the, what was the fourth? You had to read by me twice.
What's the burnt mountain station?
The 108 project?
108.
Yeah, completion of the 108 project.
Pump, burnt mountain and?
The extra pipe to finish a little ago.
Thank you.
Which one do you want me to do?
All of them.
Okay, 108 project, y'all approved last month for the emergency project on Highway 108. We have completed it, it is done and the pipe's in, been pressurized, metrological test run on it and everything's good on it. So we're not running a section of our system off fire hose anymore. Any questions on that? Maybe, probably not. The next thing for the agenda, we need about 2,000 more feet of six inch C900 water line for the Cockman Rock project to get it down to Ivy Green Lane. I think that's right, Ivy Green. And that will complete that project and get us out of there. We've got budgeted, y'all got budgeted, I think 50,000 for it. And we've spent 18,000 so far. And this will be about another seven or eight thousand and?
Three dollars eighty-five cents, I believe, per foot.
Yes, that's three, he's going to hold the same price. If that's the way we want to do it, he'll hold the same price on the pipe as it was at the original bid that y'all accepted. If y'all want to do it that way, or we can rebid the pipe. He said he's going to hold that until Tuesday morning because, which also can say that it's fixing to go up, that he would hold the $3.83 per foot until Tuesday morning. Or if y'all want to rebid it, we can rebid it. That's why I was telling you, y'all guys, on which way to go on that.
And I, well, I have to, councilor have to throw it on that at the meeting Monday night.
Okay. And then burnt mountain pump station is basically the same horsepower, probably the same people bidding for another 40 horsepower, three phase, 460 motor for burnt mountain lift station. And like I said, it'll be the same two bid for Indian Forest last month's meeting. And then just a reminder that Matchpoint is coming again for early detection starting
Pray for warm weather. How long will they take? Did they give you an estimate?
Two weeks.
Two? Is that comparable to what they spent last year?
They were here for a month last year, almost a month last year, but it was a $50,000 contract. This is a $25,000 contract where we're going to do half this year and half next year. Sort of split it up and keep them coming every year to help because it did help last year, didn't it, Cuddy? A big difference.
Big contributor to the successful application for 333,000 gallons per day, one withdrawal.
And we've got to get the permit to operate increased up this year to that. So this hopefully will help with that, this year getting the actual treatment itself up to 2.33.
Thank you. I will have to, we'll put all the items on the agenda except for report on lift station. No, 108 water line.
Okay.
You don't need to hear that again. All right, let's go back up to the first item now. Give Bill a chance to go over, wish his son a birthday, but we also have a visitor presentation on electronic filing systems for building permits, drawings and plans. I'll let you introduce yourself if you would.
For those, I haven't introduced myself to, I'm Winston Morse, one of the founders. Let's get this going again. Lonnie, I'm not getting, there it is, it is getting signaled now. There we go. One of the founders of E-Plant Solutions and I'd like to thank you first for the opportunity to come up here and speak a little bit about the service we provide. Only having 10 minutes, it's the first time I've done a presentation for what we do in 10 minutes. As an engineer, this is not my forte to begin with. So I'm probably going to go fast and I just wanted to kind of highlight some of the high level features, some of the, you know, the support services we provide and, you know, how we are different and why I think we are so successful at what we do. So if we just kind of start. So what is E-Plant Solutions? EPS is a cloud-based application that takes a project-centric approach to the plan review, permitting and inspection process. Meaning we want to take all the actions, documents and communications associated with the project and then all have it all be relative to that project. Now, on about project, anytime anything happens, all the stakeholders will be notified. Each project will have five or six types of information. They're going to be the documents, the communications, the fees, the requirements, the details and inspections. This information is going to be stored on that project and like I said, anytime anything happens, relevant users get notified. I'll go more into the specific types of information at the end, but I wanted to get through some of the kind of stuff I think you guys would find slightly more important than this. What is our cost? We are a zero cost solution for jurisdictions, meaning at no time will we ever ask you for money. What it includes, includes training and support, onsite training during the implementation process and during major updates and the remote support via web meetings, telephone, email, as everybody is using the system. How we make our money? The cost is paid for by the applicant and this would be an architect, an engineer, a homeowner applying for a permit. And the prices range from $5 to $175. And this is, the range is because we really want to try to make it equitable to the user on the outside. $5 for a simple permit, $175 for new construction over 25,000 square feet. If we talk just a little bit about more support, like I said, it's onsite training during software implementation and major updates. We do it from 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM Eastern Standard Time. Including that would be report customization, if you guys would want specific types of reports on the data that we collect and continued backend data management. I didn't mention on the front side, but we will actually build an app for you. So we will come, take your paper applications, transmit, put them in a digital format. You know, sometimes things don't translate exactly right, but we do all that work for you and then launch it and get your approval after we've built it. So you don't, your staff doesn't have to spend any time learning something new and how to build the backend of all the systems. The big one that makes us really different from anybody else, and I think this is one of the primary reasons we're successful, is we support the public. In doing this, if anybody has an issue with, you know, believe it or not, our most common tech support question is how do I log in? They don't call you and burden the staff of the city to do it, they call us and we walk them through it. And the same thing with anytime uploading files or even support services on the Adobe side or Autodesk and Bentley, which are Autodesk or drafting programs. We support those and then we don't charge them any additional fees and there's no premium service for that support. Data management, we are cloud-based and hosted servers are in hardened facilities. We currently use one-on-one hosting. We've had, we've used them for, I believe, the last five years, but that's liable to change based upon how much we get charged for their hosting services. We do do daily backups to both Google Drive and Amazon Web Services and then weekly and offsite backups just because I'm an engineer and I enjoy my redundancy. And then doing this, we've had nine years without any data loss. Now, I used to think that was a big deal, but it's really not. It's all gotten pretty good. Data retention, we don't ever archive your projects. So if, the only time we do is when it's closed by the city. And then we have in our agreement that archived project will be placed back on the server for, within 48 hours. And EPS means all the state standards for data retention, which if you haven't looked are kind of all over the board based upon the project type and what you're submitting. So any questions on that part so far?
Few questions. Your local backups that are offsite, you go through a vendor or is that in-house?
That's in-house. We set a terabyte local server that backs everything up.
Okay. Your customized report generation, what's the limitation on that?
When you do limit, what, any data we take in, we can report on. We can also report on metrics. So if you want to say, okay, well, how long does a department take to review a certain type of plan? We can do that because we're capturing all these events in the system. But we use, we use Tableau embedded into the backend and so that's how we generate a report. So if there's any additional questions, I can send you some information, but it's a big visualization software that we use. So if we jump back and talk about the six types of information, the first is the documents. And these documents are going to be submittal documents for review, but they also include ancillary documents for, you know, a typical example would be the save file or save after data that people have to submit or a contractor after that. We have both, two methodologies for storing those. One, what we call the open files, which is basically a free exchange of information. And then a submittals tab that allows the tracking of approvals and rejections. And then we actually merge and control all those documents based upon the submittal and the revision. So you have a complete history of the review as it, as it happens. The communication section allows users to direct comments. Not only can you direct by user, but you can actually direct by department. So somebody could send a comment and say, hey, I need the planning department to look at this, I need the building department to look at this. Used in concert with the open files is intended to replace email exchange of information. So you would add a comment and then if you had a quote-unquote email attachment, you would put it into the open files. And then the thing that this does is really allows the archival of a project and bringing it back up. And if you have an information request, you only have to go to one place to ever put that stuff together. You don't have to go search emails, you don't have to go search files. Everything is in one location. So it can greatly reduce your costs to provide those frequent information requests. Or, you know, if a project gets delayed for two years and then comes back, you can actually go back and see all the communications that's, you know, that's happened, all the files that, you know, documents have been uploaded, all the plans that have already been submitted. So it's, you know, it can save you a lot of time and a lot of effort, maybe not today, but two years from now when something like that comes up. but two years from now when something like that comes up. The fees, we can collect your fees also for plan review or in or permanent. The fees can be either auto-calculated or dynamically input. And or, we can actually create a fee based upon an event. Something like this would be if an inspection fails, we would auto-create the event of a new inspection and then auto-insert a fee of the re-inspection fee. Or if you have a re-review fee for plans upon failure, we go ahead and automate that entry into the fee tab. Just one more thing on fees before I go on. The funds, as we collect the funds, they're not co-mingle. We use a third-party payment processor that's, that their business is government payments. So they have all the, all the documentation and do all the auditing. So we just basically send the payments to them and then they send back the confirmation to us. We have project requirements. The project requirements is very helpful in allowing the applicant to understand what needs to happen, what types of plans need to be submitted. So you can see in this case, the applicant is still needing to upload his business license and state card. We can write in there a great description of what he needs to do. And this greatly helps the process flow and as soon as they create the project, they can see the six steps that need to happen for them to be able to either get their plan approval or permit. And then project details, this is where we're going to house all the application information. So as they go online, they fill it all out. It's easily accessible to all users, which makes it easy for people to get up to speed when they switch from project to project. Including that, we have some built-in benefits to the contractor and then architect, the engineer of allowing them to be able to share projects with other users. So the architect is able to share the project with the contractor, then the contractor can either go log in, pay the permit fees and download the latest sets of documents. If a revision gets submitted, the contractor is going to get the notification that, hey, this revision has been submitted. It's one of the things I really wanted to build in, simply because as an engineer, we always had contractors that never had the right set of plans. And so if everybody used our system, everybody would at least get an email saying, hey, you don't have the right set of plans. Within the project details, we have project relationships. These can either be parent-to-child and they can be built off any kind of type of application data that we collect. So we, you know, the default setting right now is any project that has the same address, you would just, you'd be able to see both projects at the same time. But you can do it by owner, by landlord, by district. And however we collect that information, we can run a script that will allow all that stuff to relate together. The inspections, inspections are, can be performed on any internet-enabled device. We have a mobile platform, so what you're looking at is the computer platform, but the mobile platform just looks like any other website where it's the, the phone page is slightly different than the website page, more condensed. We can collect photos and like I said, if something passes, we can go ahead and auto-create re-inspections and not go insert re-inspection fees. Does that make it 10 minutes? Because I go fast.
Couple of questions real quick.
Sir.
Encryption level, since it's a cloud-based process.
Yes.
What type of encryption?
We have encryption on the database and then we, the passwords are, for lack of a better term, scrambled. And then there's no way for us to unscramble. So, and then we don't actually collect any credit card information. So the risk is also pretty small.
Okay. Next question is, if the city or someone's using your services next time to terminate, what's the process there for that?
Within 30 days of written notification and we will provide you all the data.
Okay. What type of format does the data come in? Or is that generally by the customer?
MySQL.
I hope he knows what that is.
It's a database.
How about when you're uploading stuff to the site, what kind of protection do you have in case somebody wants to get, you know, kind of crazy on it?
You know, that's, that's hard, right? We have a, we have a 100 megabyte upload, upload limit, which doesn't let, you know, movies and stuff get uploaded. But we have essentially a lot of the same standard language user agreements that everybody else has in the, in the kind of uploading world. You know, you're responsible for, for this stuff. Now, we can, you know, go in and delete anything that we find and we can restrict user access. You know, if somebody is doing something wrong, we can, we can lock them out of the system. One of the other things we get is, you know, in the communication section that says, hey, what if a user goes in and, you know, continually calls everybody, you know, mean and not very nice? We can go in and delete those comments, but they're not actually deleted from the database. They're just deleted from the view. So if something like that ever happened, you could always go back and say, look, this guy posted 42 times that nobody's very nice to him.
Any other questions?
Can I add something to that? Basically, what, what I wanted to do as far as plans and middle and stuff, that once we get plans and middles, that we can, and it's approved and everything, and we can use that information to go to our fire program to do pre-fire plans for ISO. That's the reason, that's the part that I was having to talk about, not necessarily the other stuff, but, but, you know, that then that way it's easier for us to download that to that file and use that as far as, you know, doing our pre-fire plans and stuff. Now, one feature that you did mention was that if we found something that was failed or we want to change on the plan, all we have to do is mark that, send that page back and they can redo that.
Yes, the, the plan review process, we handle all, all manners of plan review, from checklist to redlining plans. It's a bit more involved. Like I said, my typical demonstration takes probably an hour, 15 minutes.
But it's, did you not tell me that there was no cost to, you know, like if we submitted one page back to the...
Oh, no, yeah, it's a one charge cost for the applicant.
So he's not recharged for submitting that one page and everything? And then another thing is, is all that is stored pretty much forever as long as we use it. We can put it in a file on our computers or our server also.
Correct. We don't archive the project, you guys do. And literally, our first project ever in Douglas County nine years ago was still available for, for them to go look at.
So I thought it would be easier to, for us to find previous plans if somebody's renovating or whatnot to tie those two together. Not necessarily, I mean, working in spite of bar.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have had questions, requests from a number of council members on services such as this. I would like to put this on the agenda for Monday night to see how much would like to proceed, if they want to proceed.
One more question.
No, my...
Search trial basis.
I mean, absolutely. We're, we're free, right? Now, we don't want to go do all the background work and then have to say, ah, not so much. But if you want to say, hey, let's, let's take the building permit type.
Just see some...
And get it fired up, we'll go in there and do that.
Who are some of your clients?
Forsyth County, City of Alpharetta, City of Coming, Whitfield County, City of Dalton.
Could you provide none of Rodney?
I can't ride that fast.
I have one more question, mate.
If you go to eplansolutions.com, there's a link on there for exchange sites and it lists our current customers.
Any other questions? With your permission, I put this on the agenda for Monday night to discuss and see how far council would want to go. Discuss 2019 paving program. Lonnie?
Okay, if you look at your list...
There is something in your package, Charles.
It's color-coded and there's going to be approximately 50 different streets that the city actually owns either part of, the entire street that we maintain, but it only totals...
Come back. When you, no, when you finish with him.
It only totals approximately nine and a half miles. So there's lots of streets that we only maintain about 300 foot of or 500 or 700, city and county both own the streets. So anything in black is what the city actually maintains the entire street. Anything in green is something that the city, county both own. And I have spoke with Mr. Jones and as always in the past, as far as these street resurfacing, he is very agreeable with, you know, we want to take this partial list where we each own a little bit of the street and sit down and pick out the ones and the city take some and pave the whole street and the county takes some and pave it. It makes the pavement process so much better. It looks better, striping is better, everything. So, you know, I've got the footage here. They have footage, so we could sit down and just trade it out or either we could pay them for, you know, a small portion or they could pay us for the portion. So all that's moving on. There's about four streets that are in blue. They are streets that have not been turned over to the city, so we will not be resurfacing them unless something happens between now and the time we draw up the contract. The ones in red are streets that we've had questions on, but if you look down...
I really like the colorblind because it must all black and white. We're just following along with you, Lonnie.
Okay. I'm sorry, I thought the GM print goes, so I thought we...
We will provide at Monday meeting.
What, what streets are private that you refer to?
Okay, Rapid Woods is Mountain City Drive, right across the road from Annie's Restaurant. It is loaned, owned by landowners. I thought that was part of the, we took all the streets in and I thought we took all the streets in.
Yeah, three business parks and none of the...
That one short street is the Platts and everything takes in the street. It's just like it was with Ralph Hitch Street and they have since got that one straightened out.
That's council, that's something needs to be done. That's an oversight. These people pay taxes and they deserve to have the roads.
Well, that's what, the colored copy that I have...
The color copy that you don't have is... Explain, if you pitch your presentation.
I am, I am working on that. And if you look at the first, if you look back at John and Lane and Noah Drive, it showed up on the computers with the county and everything, but the city did not, that was not in the city. So I met with Roy Dobbs and we went through several papers through the clerk court. It has, we actually have a deed registered for those streets, so that's being corrected automatically. It's just, there's some things that's...
Those roads were accepted by the city when they gave us those properties.
Right. And it's cleared up. I mean, it's, it's clear. We got paperwork to prove it. Such things that we've got one street like Brittany Court down across from the horse that Dairy Queen was, according to Hugh Public and some information I found, only half of that street is the city, the other half is privately owned. So I'm looking to see if we paved the whole street or if we paved just half of it what's registered to the city. So these are just questions. I'm going through them. A lot of them are just simple answers. But all of this will be straightened out before we put, set out the contract for the paving and we'll want to sit down with the county and figure out a schedule of which streets they'll resurface and which ones we will. So, I mean, it's just moving on. Everything's falling into place. Some of it is just a missed post on a computer website or something.
Hey Lonnie, was Philadelphia Lane one of the streets that...
Philadelphia Lane is not according to it. It's got two landowners that own it. But we also took that in when we took the industrial car. So it was left off of the list or something. Something happened. But I've talked to the landowners that, the developers that developed that, and they are willing to turn that over to the city and, and sign a quick claim deed, so it's a quick fit.
I was going to say Lonnie's working to get quick claim deed signed on the...
So everything, everything is getting straightened out. I mean, and a lot of this is just simple, very simple.
Usually, usually the flag will fly when the landowner, the person who built the road, continues paying property tax on the land and usually they're in the city hall and we have in the past, I always had counsel to accept those properties in due course. And if they don't, they end up remaining on people's tax.
But I, you know, these that, when you get your copy, color-coded copy, money, you can see the street.
It's nice to be me. I've got a color.
You can see the streets, but anyway, we're moving forward and everything's falling right into place. I mean, no, nothing is really jumped out at us to be in, as far as being contradictory or anything like that. It's just some little something that's happened. So the next subject is the big project that we talk about all the time. DOT did a phase one. They needed our utilities sent to them. Turnip Seed Engineering did that. They have now done a second phase that they wanted the cost estimation as far as what it's going to cost to relocate all our utilities from a row about Wendy's to Walgreens. That's due in at the DOT office tomorrow, February the 1st. Turnip Seed Engineering has finished that as of today. It's, the total amount for relocating all of our utilities through that stretch is The engineering cost is going to be $95,225. The utility aid that DOT has, which we've talked to Turnip Seed today, they're going to go ahead and send a notification to the DOT that we'd like to apply for that grant. It will pay for this project if we're approved minus the engineering. So we have to pay for the engineering. There's a process. We've got a six-inch line over there and we want to move it to a 10-inch line because of everything developing right here in town. It's called a betterment policy. We will have to pay for the difference from a six-inch to a 10-inch. So that's something that we would have to look at, that would be the other cost plus the engineering cost. So that's, the project's going on there. I'm working on some sidewalk projects. We're moving forward with that for the LeBeg money and trying to locate different areas that the sidewalks are broke up, messed up and out of line and got some information as far as what kind of question would be asked from a concrete company or a person that would pour the sidewalks. And so we're getting ready to draw up a contract and put down the sidewalk areas and try to answer all these questions in the contract. And that's about it, unless you have questions.
Did you say the engineering thing was included?
The engineering thing, $95,225. That's for every utility sewer and water from somewhere right along Wendy's to Walgreens right here.
Now sidewalks, we're going to avoid the areas that are included in the big project. Doesn't make a whole lot of sense for us to go in and repair sidewalks in those areas and then the big project comes through, destroys them and then put down, I think they're five-foot sidewalks. five-foot sidewalks, uh, included in the project. So, we are working to avoid this same area.
But I think if they need repair, we do need repair and we need to at least look at them.
I, I hear that, I don't really think we can use LeBig money for that. Does that have to be replacement Lonnie or can it be repair?
I think most of it has to be replacement or new sidewalks, but we can check, I mean.
Well, we'll, we'll look at areas, I'm not sure LeBig is the right money for that instead of doing gardens.
But if we do the, if we do all fifty of these roads on the spring contract, which like I said, is nine and a half miles, uh, we'll have splosh money too that's labeled for sidewalks and we can do patching and stuff of that.
This splosh ends twenty?
Twenty-twenty, yes. Be up for negotiation.
This nine and a half mile is pretty aggressive and we'll finish the roads in the city.
However, city and every street in the city.
Complete it, that's why we're looking at sidewalks. It's pretty aggressive, but then last summer's was pretty aggressive and it was downtown streets and wider, uh, more difficult to schedule the work than it will be on these others hopefully. Some of them will be difficult, but it's not gonna be as wide. Uh, I don't plan on putting that on the agenda, uh, until we get closer to the time for approving it, but I will provide you a color copy.
May I ask a question?
Sure.
What about the traffic lineup?
Okay, the, I met the contractors up in town, it's been three or four weeks ago, and they have chosen to do Gimmer County and Panning County first. They were gonna do it in stages, but since our area right there with the bank, the monument and everything, uh, they said they really enjoyed working in grass and gravel and that they were gonna save us the last and then they would concentrate on that area, uh, wrap the monument in plastic, work with us on the sidewalks and the valve sits right there and everything and so, I don't have a timetable, but I think the, I think they're supposed to be done with everything by March.
Did they say anything about the mass arms being delivered or?
They did not, but we could talk.
Twenty-two weekly time.
Yeah.
They've had close to that.
I don't remember the date.
Six weeks, six months, twenty-two?
I don't remember the date that they ordered the arms, I don't remember that.
See if you can find out for, for the council, maybe you might correct.
I think I've got a letter, we can share on that one. All right. Uh, getting down to, uh, last three. Uh, discuss changes to alcohol ordinances to agree with state codes concerning Sunday brunch hour with ten percent of liquor sales, uh, versus food sales. Again, questions from some council members on that, uh, with your permission, I'll add that to the agenda and, uh, we can, we can research what needs to be done. There has been a change in the, uh, Sunday hours for Sunday, Sunday sales on the state code, uh, and while we are nearly at the state allowed on percent of alcohol to food, we're not quite there, so we can give you that information. Last item I've got, uh, is a letter I received this week from Richard Fairness concerning yard signs in the city. He would, uh, again, you can take the letter and read it, we'll, uh, discuss it, uh, at the meeting if desired, but he's got some real concerns with a number of yard signs showing up at city limits. He would like to start picking them up himself and I told him we probably need to try to avoid doing that, maybe the city can do a, a better job of picking them up and he wouldn't have to, uh, but, uh, if, if the council is willing, we will maybe put a little bit more effort into picking up illegal yard signs.
We've addressed that in the past several times and we have council actions in the past, uh, if you wanna go back, but we, I think the only thing we allow legally is the, of course, campaign signs during elections, but, uh, the, uh, real estate signs.
Real estate and the yard.
And, and we use, uh, and when someone attaches a, a lost dog to a stop sign, that's a violation of state law and that needs to be addressed. So, by just simply calling a person, saying you can't do that a couple of times and if they'll still hang them on, it looks really bad.
And hopefully, we discussed it at the meeting, uh, people listening, people watching NoPickens.com and reading the paper, seeing the discussion, uh, maybe self-police.
One, one yard sign will breed twenty more if you leave it out there, they'll, they'll just take over. Of course, you got 515 on the weekend, it turned into Cottondale again. Uh, you know the story of Cottondale when you go to Panama City is peaches and plums and oranges all the way down and all the way back and onion. So, uh, it's, it just takes maintenance by the tree department.
Yeah. With your permission, we'll put some effort on that, then again, uh, discussion, uh, in front of NoPickens and, uh, so, uh, article in the paper may help people police themselves. Those are the items I have, hoping for agents of interest of mayor and council.
Jim, you had gave me a list of, of vehicles and stuff, all just the mileage of the years. Can you add a time of use for those vehicles too? That way we don't have vehicles sitting around not being used, that can be used in other areas.
I will research that. I'll find out what, uh, what's available and we may have to make some information available for maintaining information.
Okay. Jim, I have a couple items, uh, one is, I got a text message today and said Wingsology's closing, that's not good news.
Yep.
Uh, I'm waiting, I guess Fred that first on the camera, didn't mean to, but, uh, I really hate that. Uh, Randy, uh, the mayor of Talking Rock in his capacity as mayor, uh, we've been on the phone with, uh, elected, uh, state elected officials pretty much all week. Uh, your sister of the council, well, she mayor, at least mayor pro temp.
Well, she probably will be, but now.
Yeah, but she's called me several times and they're starting to work on the, I call them J-turns in Northern Jasper, Talking Rock. And Randy, you wanna give the council an update on what you know, you probably know more than I do from.
Well, uh, pretty much I talked to Emily yesterday, which is one of the board members.
This Emily Dunn?
Yes, and then, uh, the other gentleman, was his name Jerry or?
Jerry Serrin?
Yes, I think so. And pretty much what he told me today was that, that it was done deal that pretty much, whatever efforts that we put forth, uh, that, uh, it was minute, uh, say to speak, that, whatever information that we give at this time was, was useless to, really to him. And he did say that Rick Jasper had been on the phone with him several times this week and, and everything, trying to work towards that. He fires up down at work, so we're in Paul's family where he's from.
Let me, let me clarify, his, his boundary is actually the west side of 515 at the intersection. Which got him, excuse me, which got him involved. And Ms. Dunn, uh, she is our, what we consider ours. And I'm not real, I need to check the boundary, I thought Ms. Dunn had the, Emily had the entire Pickens County, uh, but we'll take Jerry's help if we can get it. But speaking with, uh, your sister today, she, uh, said he wasn't very helpful to her, but he called me and, uh, we had a very good conversation and she, I think she resented that, but, uh, messed with it just a little, but, uh, he wants me to send him our concept as of what it needs to be. And I can get Lonnie tomorrow and give me, get me a, a Google map and we can draw what needs to happen. And just for council's information is, and I'm not an engineer, I mentioned five or six times that I'm not an engineer, but I did spend a night on the express once. And you can actually see how traffic could be much safer if you would, uh, do away with the crossover on the long stretch between Biggins and the, the Talking Rock curve. And I say that because I love to come down that hill eighty miles an hour and watch traffic change four times before you get to it and you're wondering what it's gonna be like when you get there and if you're smart, you'll just get the decent lane and turn and get on 136 and go to Talking Rock and chat. But that being said, that needs to be blocked off. And, and, and send all the traffic from Chatsworth on 136 coming to Jasper or to Elige, send them all the way down to Antioch Church Road, show them how to get up to, uh, the new traffic light that should be placed at the intersection of Antioch Church Road and 515. And then they can turn right and go north, or they can wait for the traffic light and they can turn left. And the best part about this is they're gonna arrive alive. But right now, it's chickens crossing the road from the intersection at, uh, 136 and 515, uh, on the long stretch and in the curve. We can't argue too much because that's the most dangerous curve intersection in, I think on 515. But what's gonna happen and, and, and I understand Cheryl got upset today when she was told life and limb was more important than the, uh, economy of Talking Rock. And I would hate to have told Cheryl that, but I think she may have given him an earful when she did, he did, but she's concerned about the danger that, and I told Cheryl, I said Cheryl, if you, if they build, if they're gonna build these turn lanes, there's, they're already, they're already let, it's kind of the cows out and they can't put it up. But freeze frame just a moment, this is for the news and whatever else. We had the great town hall meeting in Talking Rock where we explained the dangers and the hazards of ninety mile an hour traffic and trying to merge from Antioch Church Road over and they listened to us that evening with the county commissioner, myself, Rick Jasper's there, the mayor of Talking Rock was there and a lot of council members and the room was full. But they did like we all do in government, we had the public hearing and then they went and did what they wanted to do. Now, what we're, what we're doing tonight and with Randy as my co-conspirator is that we're informing Pickens County that we're about to have, uh, the equivalent of Talladega or Daytona in Jasper, Georgia. If you want to get to Talking Rock or leave Talking Rock, you've got to go into merged traffic which is going north at anywhere from seventy to eighty miles per hour on the low end. You've gotta merge over a lane of traffic and then you've gotta get in a turn lane to a J-turn to come back down into traffic doing about ninety miles an hour coming off of that hill and around that curve. And the best part about it, I told Ms. Emily, I said, ma'am, we're just trying to save your life. You, you live in Blue Ridge and you come back and forth to Atlanta a lot and one person trying to get to Jasper from Talking Rock is going to be a roadblock for you. And, and if you can imagine what this would look like, and you, you, every one of you ridden that road and you're thinking, this is insane. So, they're about to put insanity plus on top of insanity. Now, I told Cheryl this, I said Cheryl, let them go ahead and do what they're gonna do and we get to talk to the, citizens of Pickens County and the state of Georgia and, and I, I told Charles Law one time, I said, if there's something about the traffic light over on, on 515 and 53, I was gonna name the next fatality in his honor. And they came on this turn lane and a few things after that. They don't like, necessarily like the press that they get, but I'm telling you that there's gonna be a fatality. It's got much better, you can get killed there now, but when you get traffic merging over in northbound traffic and southbound traffic at eighty and ninety miles per hour, this is not forty-one where you got thirty-five mile an hour, you go down and you get a turn and come back. This is insane, Lisa, I could let her talk a minute, she drives it every day and it's just, just scary the way it is, but they're about to make it scaryer. And I'm saying after there's a couple of fatalities, and there will be, because every wreck there's a bone crusher, they will see the wisdom and put in a traffic light there and turning, turning 136 into a major road that will, deserves a traffic light on to 515. And I'm saying all this now, and Randy, I need a couple ABs for you, cause I, I know everybody from DOT is gonna be kicked from tomorrow.
Well, I mean, basically, you know, that's, that's basically what they said, that, uh, you know, life and limb was over, you know, uh, a town survival. Basically, you know, what, what they said. But they also said that, you know, I said, so what's gonna happen if, if a fatality or something happens? He said, well, we can always come in there and turn that and, and.
Close the horn door if the cows happen.
So, uh, but I told him I understood that, you know, there, there has been, uh, real bad wrecks there and stuff, but they haven't been in, in a good year or so, you know.
But there've been bad wrecks at Biggins, I watched a little lady get her head cut off one day for driving under a tractor trailer.
Well, I, I mentioned that to Emily and she said, she saw that and I thought it was about the bus wreck.
And it's just every, every intersection all the way up is, is dangerous.
Well, I mean, I pretty much told, uh, Jerry.
It was just a nice straight line to it. Pardon? It just says nice straight look road going to it, makes it even more dangerous.
Well, the, the curve, the curve, I call it the Talking Rock curve, when you, when you come around and it's, and you, you see Antioch Church Road, they need to make Antioch Church Road, and I don't like the term of this, but a Jasper bypass. From right there, you can go to Fairmount without having to come to town and it needs to be a traffic light, 136 extension and then 136 goes through Talking Rock. 136 deserves a little bit of attention because it's got a lot of traffic on it. But what DOT is gonna say is that that intersection does not warrant a traffic light. But if they were to turn all the traffic that's going across the pig crossing up into the straight, all the way down, force it down and come up safely to the Antioch Church traffic light, you would have, you would have some reason, reason out of chaos and that's what, that's what we're asking for. And, but I told Cheryl, I'm gonna finish with this, I said Cheryl, just, we're gonna, we're gonna make the scene and we're gonna talk about it and we're gonna be ridiculed because some people thinks that curve's worse now than what they're gonna do. But once they see the wisdom of it, they, we will have two J-turns with a traffic, we'll have a town built for us where the traffic light's there in every corner, including, uh, the side of the post office zone where there's, there's also a convenience store there across the road, every corner's gonna be a major economic boom because people stop or they'll, Talking Rock's all of a sudden gonna be alive versus they're trying to kill it. And we're talking about making it safer and safe Talking Rock. So, that being said, hello all the DOT people I know.
And yeah, hi.
And ABs from mayor and actually the mayor pro temp Cheryl. Thank you, Jim.
Lonnie, uh, you once told me today, a quick majority arriving?
Yes.
On that.
Yeah, they're already delivering quick.
So, it's moving. Anything else? John, I don't hear anything else, I think we've got, uh, what you need to do on agenda tomorrow?
If you will, it's looked like about two hours to me.
I'm thinking forty-five.
We don't round the circle. Thank you.
Thank you.
We have, uh, Mr. Douglas here with us this evening.
Yeah, apologies, I think, uh, I think Brandon's met, they haven't met David yet.
Yep, you'll have Randy, you'll meet David.
Oh, I didn't meet David?
I had not.
Okay.
Sorry.
Welcome to the meeting.
Thanks, sir.